Okay, we're live and we are recording. We will now stand for the pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome everybody to our regularly scheduled December 16th, 2021 board meeting. This will be the last board meeting of the year. And can I get started with a motion to approve the village board meeting minutes from December 2nd, 2021?
Moved.
Ruth with a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. All right, we are at citizens' comments. I'm looking, is Danielle Borelli with us? I don't see anybody that looks like Danielle Borelli.
Danielle is right there.
Yeah. Her name is Danielle. So this might be, is Daniella with the scouts?
I believe she is with the scouts, Daniella.
Okay, they're just observing.
Yes.
So. Um, we'll move on with trustees' comments. We'll start with Megan. On out the cat first.
Um, I just wanted to say that um, this morning I got to help with the um, packing of toys at the Christmas Bureau. Um, we've served, uh, and tomorrow the families are coming to pick up their um, their boxes and I think they're all gonna need a U-Haul to get all of the stuff that they're getting. Um, the community of Ballensville again has been extremely generous. We are serving over 130 people, or 130 families this year. Um, and again, the generosity was just amazing. We had leftover toys at the end that we were trying to figure out what kid, what kid we could add a little extra to, so.
Chef's got the hand up. Chef wants them.
Yeah.
So it's just always such a nice, um, nice feeling this time of year to know that our community is, is so generous to people who are less fortunate than, than the rest of us.
It's nice that you can see that in action and thanks for being part of it.
Yep. It's always fun. Other than that, I'll stick to the agenda and I apologize for the cat uh, bombing our meeting.
Nah, that's alright. You like pets. We'll move down to Ruth Seaco. Ruth, anything from you?
Uh, nothing, but I just wanted to wish everybody a happy holiday and a fabulous new year.
Okay. You too. Uh, we'll move down to Mike Shepherd.
Um, I'll stick with the agenda. Thank you.
Right. Uh, Mark Wilder.
I'll stick to the agenda items as well. Thank you.
And Bruce Demins.
I'm gonna stick to the agenda, but I'm gonna take a minute to, I talked to you on the phone, I'm not gonna name names, but praise the DPW crew that was out yesterday in not the nicest weather, picking up all the, many of our residents took advantage of the mild December and have been, continued to clean their yards. And they were out covering the village, picking up, and in my case, and I noticed somebody else mentioned the same thing on Facebook, that one of the operators of the equipment got out of the equipment in the rain and went into their yard and picked up a branch. In my case, I piled the sticks, not by the street, because I don't want them to get shoved by the snowplow, you know, a pile by a tree that I planned on moving out next May or April, but this operator got out and moved the whole pile in front of his machine and picked them up. And I just think these are examples of our, our village employees going beyond what one would expect from them. And Chuck, thanked them on my part and also the individual on Facebook. It was noticed um, and appreciated. And a little embarrassing. I will do that in the morning.
That's great. Um. Is that it, Bruce? You got anything else?
No, I'll stick to the agenda.
Okay. A few things. Um, speaking of the DPW, um, heroes again after the weekend storm. Our Christmas tree was down in the square. Um, I don't know how many of you went on the different Facebook sites, but there were 30, 40, 50 people on each site disappointed that the tree was down. It was beautiful. It's down. I hope the DPW can get it up. I'm sad, awful. Um, and Chuck had sent, sent me a couple pictures of the tree down Saturday night. And I did ask him if there were any other calls of, you know, trees down. He said, those are the only calls he got were about the tree. So then he said, Monday morning, we'll be, we'll see what we can do. All of a sudden I get a picture, I don't know, it was about 11 o'clock of the tree, 25 feet in the air, heading over towards where it goes in the ground. I, I see this big piece of yellow equipment. I don't recognize it as anything that we have. But I thought, you know, sometimes you forget. And I said to Chuck, where, where did you come up with that? And he said, well, we tried a loader and, you know, it just wasn't gonna work. And I saw a guy over by the timeless tattoo and uh, with a big thing that was putting stuff up on the third floor of that building, because they're remodeling the third floor. So Chuck had a little conversation with the guy whose name is John Mayer from Mayer Construction. And he, uh, he said, we got a tree down, Christmas tree down. I go, yeah, I saw that, you know, on the news or whatever. So you don't think it could help us? Basically, I'm stealing Chuck's story, but um, the guy said, you know, give me a couple minutes, I'll be over. So he went over and he hooked up the tree and lifted it up and put it back over. It was a little bit shorter than when it was first put in the ground, but drove by yesterday and couldn't tell the difference really. It looked pretty darn good and, and uh, they had to take, from what Chuck had said, they had to take all the lights off and the star and stuff, and then put it all back on. And it was just after lunchtime, the whole thing was ready to go. So uh, again, it's what I said to people, you know, people ask, what do I get for my taxes? And I point out, our police department and our DPW right off the bat. And the DPW particularly little things that you, that you don't even expect they would be able to help you with. And they, they, they care and they do it. Um, you know, those are, those are Bevo guys taking care of that tree, because it's, you know, it's their community. And uh, I gotta tell you, on Monday afternoon, I was so excited. I had goosebumps. I just thought, people were on Facebook saying, we knew the DPW could do it. We love our DPW. And it's like, you love to hear that, you know, at holiday time especially, but I hope they don't forget it when their brush is a little late getting picked up next summer, that remember the tree. Uh, but it was, I, I did send up an email to Louise. I hope she shared it with the crew. The same time, um, I got an email this past week from Jack Laporte. You may remember, Jack was here a few, a couple meetings ago, talking about the, the traffic problems on Virginia Street. We know people not stopping. And uh, he was told that our police department would look into it. We would look into getting the stop mean stop signs put up underneath the regular stop sign. And they followed through. He said those signs are up and he thinks they've made a big difference. Right now, he considers it a win. He said, not everybody stops. There's obviously some people who just don't have any intention of ever stopping, but he said, the number that he sees is way down. People have slowed down. And he was, he just said, thanks again for the continued efforts to make our village safe and one of the best communities to live in. So I sent a copy to Chief Lefenchek, so I know he has probably seen this, but uh, for the community to know that, you know, we do respond. I mean, some things we can't change, but some things we can affect and it appears that we've had an effect here. So again, hats off to the DPW and the police department. Um, you make my week when I get things like that and uh, I'm pretty happy. Um, somebody posted on Facebook the other day that the for sale sign was down off the Lock 24 Restaurant. And somebody said, I heard Angry Garlic might have bought it. So I called Jeff Rogers in the morning. And uh, he says, yep, we're gonna make it a smokehouse barbecue place, gonna remodel the entire place, hope to open around Memorial Day. So if what he has done with the Angry Garlic carries over into the new barbecue place over uh, by the lock, won't that be just that much better for our village? Um, so I was excited to hear that. We are, things have tightened up with COVID. People are gonna be asked to wear masks when they go into buildings, including our buildings. Uh, and some of that hasn't stopped in our buildings, but um, let's, let's see if we can get through this and not make it pain, more painful than it needs to be. Um. And I'd like to wish a happy retirement to, to Van Buren, longtime people. Ed Vander Waters retiring as the judge, the justice, I guess actually is his title. Uh, and he's been there for uh, close to 30 years, I think. And uh, our old friend from DPW Claude Sykes uh, is counting the days till January, or December 31st. And he's all done as supervisor. I guess he'll have more time to hunt and bring home the deer. And wish both of those guys a lot of enjoyment in retirement. Uh. One thing throughout, I don't know what the rest of you think. We used to at one time, print our newsletter for the DPW. You know, so you knew when the brush pickup started, you knew what to, where to call if you had a problem. And we've gone to putting it on our website. But I, I just wonder with the number of calls that I get or the emails and stuff, when is brush starting? What's the schedule? So I know people are not seeing it on the website. I'm wondering if maybe this beginning of the year, we send out a hard copy to, you know, all the homes in the village. Maybe that's all we gotta do is one time. But we have a lot of new residents. You know, we have new people in Aspen Springs, uh, different parts of the village, a lot of homes sold during the COVID time. Uh, and people who aren't from Ballensville might not know what our website is or how to find something. So at least think about it a little bit, whether we wanna just take that and, and print it one time this coming year. And then say, okay, now most of the people have seen it. And now we'll tell them, this will be on the website in the future. Let me know what you think.
Um, Dick.
Yes.
I do wanna say that it, it is on the water bill, that the DPW newsletter is on the website and we give the website address.
Okay.
Um, so I think what also we could probably do, I was thinking of this, is for new people, just mail them one. Or we try to tell them on the phone about the newsletter. For them to go on the website. So just something to think about.
Maybe that's not a bad idea when somebody signs up for, you know, to be put on the water list, because there are new people, people in the village, then maybe we should send them one out. Or, or maybe we can put like a one-page sheet, you know, because there's a lot of detail on stuff. We could just say overnight parking ban starts, you know, November 15th. Brush pickup starts May 1st, you know, not all the detail, but just a, a general and, and then list the website. Uh, so let me know what you all think. Um.
I think people put the rush out whenever they want to.
Well, that's what I, and I think when I talk to people, a lot of times they go, I, I don't know when they're coming.
And even if you don't pick, put it all the way out, it still gets picked up apparently.
That's right. You could leave your backyard and you don't get it. I don't know.
And, and Mr. Mayor, just, just a quick, uh, we, we get a, quite a few calls on that and, and uh, uh, people seem pretty thrilled to be able to, if they don't know about the webpage, to go on the webpage. That seems to work very well. And, and uh, more and more people that call us have access to the computers now and, and they seem to be able to really like go on the webpage.
Right, well, maybe we just make, we need, need to make a bigger effort to let people know that they should go to the website to find out that kind of stuff. You know, whether we do it through our meetings, whether we post it on our Facebook page, you know, once a week, put something on there. Um, but if anybody else has thoughts before we get into the next year, let me know. And that's all I have, except to wish everybody a great Christmas. Uh, and hopefully 2022 has got some promise of even better stuff. Uh, our village has reacted very well to the situation. Again, the lighting of people's homes with Christmas lights and their trees and the bushes and stuff is just awesome. So uh, you don't have to pay for lights on the lake. You can ride around the village and get a pretty good treat, seeing some beautiful decorations. Um, and I've seen places lit up that never had lights before. So have a great holiday. Stay safe. Um, department heads, we'll start with our attorney, Bob.
Uh, I just would indicate that, uh, as you know, the last board meeting, we adopted the opting out, uh, local law. The publication did go out notifying the public, uh, that that had been adopted. There is a deadline for filing petition, which will occur before we have our next meeting. So uh, I, that's January 1st. So that's something we can discuss at the next meeting. But I just wanna let everybody know that the publication did go out uh, for that. And otherwise, I'll just stick with the agenda. And again, I wish everybody very happy holidays and a, a great new year coming up.
Thanks, Bob. Move on to our court officer, Greg.
Um, I can stick with the agenda tonight, but uh, do wanna wish everyone uh, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. We won't see each other till 2022 on this uh, screen. So hope everyone has a good couple weeks here.
You too, Greg. Thank you. Village clerk, Mo.
Um, I just wanted to remind all the water customers within the village that if you had a balance at the end of November, it was levied on, it will be levied on your March taxes. Um, so if you come across your bill and it was due prior to November 25th, just uh, save your money and save it for when your tax bill comes out. Otherwise, I think I'm just gonna stick to the agenda.
Very good. Thank you, Mo.
Thanks.
Treasurer, Mr. Baker.
Um, I'll stick to the agenda and I'll wish everybody happy holidays and a very, very happy new year.
Thank you, sir. What's your choice of music tonight?
It's very quiet here.
There you go. Move on to the senior center. Ruth Troy.
I just want to thank the community for the support for the senior center all year long, but especially the past couple months. We've had um, the calendar project, which Mrs. Clark spearheads and our wreath sale, and then just recently the craft sale. And folks have been very generous and participated in all of that. So thank you for that. Um, and also just wanna wish people a very happy and healthy holiday season.
Very good. Thank you, Ruth. Public Works, Chuck.
Yep, everything pretty much is wrapped up for the summer. We're pretty much in the, the winter mode now. Um, the, the one big thing we had the other day was the tree thing. And I just wanted, um, um, the guys were great. They just, they just went over and, and then just, everybody pitched in and, and got that back up again. And when I talked to that Joe Mayer, the contractor, uh, when I told him what the problem was and he was just, you could tell it was a Christmas spirit that he was thrilled to help us. Came, came over, threw the thing back up where it just, it, it worked, it went very well. So just hats off to him and to the guys and, and uh, it was, it was, it was a good project. Um, brush is finally over, over, over. Yeah, brush is done this, you know, in November, but it, they just kept getting nice days. And then after the storm, we went through, today was the last day. And actually, it's been so good, we weren't able to do much of the sweeping because of the, the, um, the, the, everything coming down so late. And we got through the whole village sweeping. I think we have one more day to do and we're gonna, we'll get it cleaned up and, and uh, things look pretty well. Other than that, I'll stick to the agenda.
Yeah, village looks great, Chuck. Thanks. And we move to the police department. Chief Lefenchek.
Good evening, Mayor. Uh, I just wanted to uh, touch base on uh, something that I've actually gotten, uh, some phone calls and text messages from people that I know on the community and uh, especially as relates to school safety. And uh, there's been a lot of discussion and talk lately on social media about uh, threats against school and, and those types of things. And, and I just wanted, uh, certainly the residents of the Ballensville community to know. Uh, I'm not gonna go into explicit detail on how we handle those things, but uh, i- if we receive word uh, from a community member, student, staff member, anyone about a potential threat, uh, we immediately go into our threat assessment process and start to review that to determine uh, A, what type of threat is it? B, who did it originate from? C, the validity of that? Uh, uh, next, uh, obviously we involve school officials, uh, we'll, we'll involve the district attorney or the county attorney's office, uh, depending upon the age of the youth involved. Uh, we're gonna determine if there's access to weapons, uh, the type of threat involved. Um, was it, was it verbal? Was it something over social media, whether images portrayed? Um, and, and that's something that we have done several times this school year. It's not something that we obviously publicize, but it's something that we deal with and we deal with it in a very expeditious manner. We're fortunate that we have a school resource officer, uh, who's a member of our department at Baker High School. Another one who's a member of our department at Dirkie Junior High, and then a member of the sheriff's office down at Ray. And each one of them is also partnered with one of the elementary schools. So we've got pretty good law enforcement coverage within the district that we can immediately start to look into and investigate any type of threat that, that is received. Uh, having a good working relationship with the school district is paramount to us. And uh, again, uh, this is something that we take seriously. This is something that uh, both Mike Lockwood, the lieutenant, myself are immediately notified on. We're, we're right on top of it and really in, in direct control of, of those investigations. Uh, while our school resource officers are handling that, we're making sure we're kept up to date. So we know exactly where we're at and what we've got. Uh, it could include going to people's homes, uh, searching them if necessary for weapons, talking to parents, uh, arrests if necessary. Uh, there, there's provisions in the penal law that deal with making a terroristic threat. So uh, the potential for that is, is, is serious. And uh, it's something that um, we don't take lightly. And uh, I, I got a text a couple hours ago from a community person I know who's got a, a child in school and, and she was asking about this type of thing that she's heard on social media. And, and she was concerned. So I just thought it would be important for me to, to make mention of that and for people to uh, to understand what we do, how we do it, and, and that it's a, a serious thing for us.
I'm glad you mentioned it, because I had a neighbor who's got two young kids in school. And there's a lot of talk going around amongst the parents, uh, not really sure exactly what they're, they're hearing and what it means. And I, I assumed that I would hear from you tonight. If not, I was gonna ask you, so that you beat me to punch with it. Uh, and I'm glad you did, uh, because it's obviously kind of scary stuff, mostly because it's so unknown. You know, I have no.
Right.
But I think it helps, it will help people knowing that we are already, I think, ahead of the curve, you know, and.
Well.
Here what's going on and.
I, I don't know how ahead of the curve we are. I just know that I think having our school resource officers embedded in the school uh, in, in us having such a long history and a, a good working relationship with the school district. Uh, you know, when, when the superintendent took the job and I, I met with him on one of his first days, I, I was very direct and told him that uh, you know, our relationship with the school district is, is the most important professional relationship we have. Uh, it's paramount for us to be successful as an organization, as a police department, because if you look at that school campus and the number of people that are on that campus on a school day from 7:30 in the morning until 3:00 in the afternoon, it's the highest concentration of people in this village, period, under discussion. So for us to, to not have a good working relationship with the school district would uh, would not allow us to be as successful as we have been over the last, you know, 50 years since we've been a community policing organization. So uh, you know, what we do is by having school resource officers there, it cuts down on the amount of time that once the SRO is made aware that, hey, this, there's a threat, we've received something, something's been heard, uh, we can immediately begin to investigate that, because the school is very good at, at information sharing and communication and, and the information gathering. They're not trained investigators. And so having our SROs there could immediately start to isolate, identify, uh, in interview witnesses and people involved is, is a real help. And uh, oftentimes we, we allocate road patrol resources, SROs from other schools as well, to immediately uh, give, give the, whatever case uh, we're, we're involved in as much attention to detail and as much attention to the matter as it requires.
Very good. Thank you, Chief.
Absolutely.
Nice to hear.
Sure.
Where we are with that.
Otherwise, Mayor, nothing else unless these questions for me.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
We'll move on. Uh, nothing new under pending business. We'll move on to new business. Um, can I get a motion to set a public hearing for Thursday, January 6th, 2022 at 7:30 PM regarding a waiver of the tax cap? Megan? Uh, I got a second from Ruth. Uh, just so people know, we have no intention of going over the tax cap, but things happen. Um, suddenly you find out that something you had planned on in the budget is gone and you're over the tax cap. And if you are over that without this waiver, um, it's, can get costly and the penalties are high. And this is just to cover us. And then at some point, once the new budget is in effect and everything looks normal, then we get rid of this. So, so we have a motion in the second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Item B, can I get a motion to set a public hearing for Thursday, January 6th, 2022 at 7:35 PM regarding the adoption of the proposed 2022, 2023 village budget? Mike Shepherd? Second from anybody? From Bruce? Um, we've been working on the budget. Um, we're pretty close. On the, the 6th, we would approve the proposed budget. And then the, the citizens would be able to view that budget and ask questions if they want before we entertain making it a final budget. So we have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Item C, can I get a motion to declare a 1962 Stewart trailer mounted rider serial number 844994 as surplus?
It's only 60 years old?
Motion. Somebody make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
And Shep with a second? Um, this is a DPW piece of equipment, Chuck?
Right, this is an old uh, uh, machine that used to clean sewers and uh, it's since been replaced three or four times. And it, it, we tried getting it running again and just, it's done.
Well, if it's a 1962, it paid its dues.
Yeah, it did.
It owes us nothing. All right, we have a motion in the second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Um, before we move on uh, to pay bills and close the meeting, is there anything else anybody would like to address?
I'd like to, if I could, give Bob a heads up. Um, Chuck and our engineer at DPW, we discussed the the December 31st taking over of the water districts. And the one district that requires some work to be done. And maybe you wanna pull that up and look and see what kind of legal ramifications may be involved. Um, Lysander says they're gonna do it, but they've been saying that for five years. But I just wanted to give you a heads up to be able to tickle it somewhere in a file and see, so you can have in front of you when they do reach out to you.
Okay, because I've got, I have, um, Mo has been very good to send me copies of all the various agreements that we have in place, uh, with Lysander and also Van Buren regarding the water industries. So I'll, I'll, I'll take a look at that. Is, is, this is the, any specific district or this is just the?
It's, it's the, it's the West United C District. Um, there's some, there's some work that needs to be done and they've agreed to do it. Um, there's some question about contractors, but it's coming to the end of the, uh, the agreement. And we just wanna make sure that we do it right. And we don't, we don't agree to it until the work's done or get something in writing.
I'll, I'll pull that up.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Bruce. Anything else that anybody would like to address? I hope the, the scouts that were watching uh, saw the wheels of government working and how everybody in this group has a say in what we do and um, that you learned a little something. And maybe someday you'll be a village board member or a planning board member or a mayor or whatever. Thanks for joining us. Um. Thanks for joining us. Um, and that will be it for the night. Can I get a motion to pay bills as audited? Ruth? Second from Megan? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Can I get a, that's carried. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:07? Mike Shepherd and Megan? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? See everybody next year.